Okay, good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call back to order the Pasco Board of County Commission meeting, May 19, 2020. If I can remind everybody that's present, please silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones at this time. Now we will proceed with public hearings, starting with Item P1 ordinances. Madam Clerk, do we approve for Item P1?
My apologies, my phone was on mute. Yes, Item P1 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on April 19, 2020.
I see the thing is withdrawn, but staff?
Yes, Item P1 is BCS 20-0173. This was supposed to be an amendment to Land Development Code, Section 1104, flood damage prevention, and indeed, it's being withdrawn from further consideration.
All right, thank you, ma'am. P2, Madam Clerk, do we approve?
Yes, Item P2 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on April 19, 2020.
Item P2 is BCS 20-0201, and this was an amendment to the Pasco County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 18. It's being withdrawn from further consideration.
All right, thanks, Ms. Hernandez. Moving on to P3, Madam Clerk, do we approve?
Yes, sir. Item P3 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on April 19, 2020, April 26, 2020, May 23, I'm sorry, May 3, 2020, and May 10, 2020.
Thank you. Is this Ms. Hernandez again?
Denise Hernandez, yes, Planning and Development, PDD 20-0537. This is an ordinance establishing the Parkview at Long Lake Ranch Community Development District pursuant to Chapter 190 Florida statutes, providing for authority and power of the district, providing for powers and duties of the district, providing for board of supervisors of the district, providing for the district budget, providing for functions of the district, providing for miscellaneous provisions, providing for an effective date. Today, we're asking that you adopt this ordinance by roll call vote.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Any questions from the board?
Seeing this is my district, I will move to approve P3.
Mr. Starkey?
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, we, these are public hearings. We have no one signed up for, we have people signed up for P3, however, I think they're involved with the application. Do they wish to speak?
Okay, I didn't have anybody, I had somebody listen for P4, so, but go ahead. Does anybody on P3 like to speak if they are the applicant involved? I hear nobody, so Commissioner Starkey has a motion on the floor.
I think we're, technically, we're, we're trying. Hold on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are we okay, Mr. Steinsider? I mean, there was a motion on the floor to approve, so.
But you have, but you have three people signed up for public comment, and for the purposes of record, I wish to get the ClearView Design folks to say that they don't wish to take their time.
Okay.
Good afternoon, please state your name and address for the record.
Tom Griggs, Maddy Holmes, 4107 Crescent Park Drive, River View, Florida, 33578.
Mr. Griggs, this is Jeff Steinsider, the county attorney. You are the applicant for this CDD petition?
Mr. Griggs?
Yeah.
Are you the applicant for this petition?
We are, yeah.
Do you have anything that you, are all your representatives here to support the petition? Do you have anything you want to state for the record? There is a motion to approve your item on the floor.
I have a question, county attorney. Are you are the applicant?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, sir.
Can we hold just a second? I just want to make sure we got his name and address for the record. The mic was not on.
Number five, Mr. Griggs.
I'd like to read it into the record, Mr. Thomas Griggs.
Do you have anything you want to state for the record?
Address is 71, I'm sorry, 4107 Crescent Park Drive, River View, Florida, 33578.
Mr. Griggs, if you could please repeat your name and address for the record?
I just did.
Tom Griggs, Maddy Holmes, 4107 Crescent Park Drive, River View, Florida.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And his, and his comment, his comments that he was making while the clerk was, was, they were fine, they were, they're fine. Mr. Chairman, I think you're good to go with your motion.
Okay, is Attorney Kami Corbett?
Ms. Corbett?
I think she's okay.
Yes, this is Kami Corbett, yes. I'm the applicant's representative, and Mr. Griggs was speaking on behalf of the whole applicant team. We do waive any public comment in respect of this application, and we're happy to answer any questions, should anybody have them.
Okay, thank you for that, I appreciate it. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Starkey, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, the second by Commissioner Wells.
The second by Commissioner Wells. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Wells.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 2, Chairman Moore.
Aye, thank you so much. Motion passes 5-0. Item P4, Madam Clerk, do we approve?
Yes, sir. The Imp4 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on April 26, 2020.
IMP4 is an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, providing for the amendment of Chapter 42 Pasco County Code of Ordinances, providing for modification, repeal or severability, inclusion into the Pasco County Code, and providing for an effective date. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you are aware, this is the ordinance that the county attorney's office was asked to draft, to modify your existing overgrown conditions ordinance, sometimes colloquially referred to as the overgrown lot ordinance, and expand it. We, after introduction, met with members of the development community who had some concerns with the, with the version that was introduced, and some members of the agricultural community made modifications to, to the ordinance that was proposed for introduction. Both the groups that we talked to indicated that they were no longer concerned with the proposed draft that you have before you today. The main change to your existing ordinance is that large acreage that has uncultivated vegetation, which is defined to be all unmaintained vegetation, that is grown in an uncontrolled manner more than eight inches in height, or which is liable to produce unhealthy, an unhealthy or unsanitary condition, or become a harboring place for mosquitoes, vermin, or vectors. This term shall not include controlled plants, gardens, trees, palms, silviculture, and farm operations with bona fide agricultural uses. Your current ordinance has a 12-inch height limitation, and on acres, on pieces of property which are larger than one acre, there, the property owner is only required to maintain a 30-foot buffer. This, the ordinance amendment was generated based on some email, some complaints that you got from the Beacon Woods neighborhoods surrounding the Lynx Golf Course, but would apply to any acreage not meeting the exclusions provided for in the ordinance. We ask that you accept public comment, if any, to the, on the amendments to Chapter 42, and adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 42 Pasco County Code of Ordinances by roll call vote. Authorize the execution of the ordinance by the chair and direct board records to transmit the ordinance to the Department of State by electronic mail within 10 days of adoption of the ordinance, and I'm ready to take any question, or questions now, or I believe we've got, don't believe we have anyone on this, on the call-in list. We did have an email from Diane Coburnick, which I would ask the clerk to read into the record at this point.
Madam Clerk?
Emails from Diane Coburnick, Gulf Harbors United, Public Relations Director, 5001 South Shore Drive, Newport Ritchie, Florida, 34652. Commissioners, I am respectfully urging you to vote in favor of Agenda P4, the amendment to Chapter 42. It is a sad statement to say that many property owners simply are not respectful citizens. The passing of this amendment will help your law-abiding constituents. It has been said that some owners have no money to maintain their, their land, such as the defunct golf courses. This opinion is favoring these inconsiderate, select few property owners, and subjecting many property owners to the consequences. Any other property owner that allows their property to become a public safety concern is subject to the county's code enforcement regardless of their financial status. I would also ask you to review and update the process for code enforcement and have it applied the same across the board for all violations. Let it not need to take almost one year before prosecution of overgrowth violations. Florida Statute 125.69 allows the county to prosecute repeat offenders more harshly and higher penalties, with higher penalties. I suggest the board considers applying this statute. I urge you to vote in favor of this amendment and start the process of being fair and equitable. Your law-abiding constituents will thank you for this. Thank you.
Okay, that was the only public comment we had, if I'm not correct? Is it, do we have anybody on the line signed up for public comment? Paul?
No, sir, aside from the email received, that's all we have.
Okay, great. So, P4, I don't know if any questions, commissioners? I have a few questions, but if anybody has any before me, I'd love to hear.
So, you know, this is not my favorite ordinance, even though I'm, I'm a very big stickler on aesthetics and rundown buildings and those kind of things, but I would be very much in favor if the, the owner of the golf course had to keep a strip maintained around the edge, but this requires the whole thing to be mowed, is that right, Jeff?
That's correct.
So, does this apply to the county as well? So, any, anytime we have grass in an approved area over eight inches, and DOT, they're going to be required to mow it?
I believe there is an exemption for government, but I'd have to, I'd have to check.
I didn't see any when I read through it, so, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna really have a problem keeping DOT with the grass at eight inches and under all along State Road 54. I, I went out and drove around with one of the HOA members, he may have been the president, I don't recall, but, you know, I, I used to get calls from people who backed up to our property before we built Longleaf, and we got calls all the time about mowing our grass so that people could see our cows, and that when we went through the Longleaf procedure to get developed, people were very upset because they paid a premium to look at our property, and they thought we needed to keep it that way, because they had paid a premium to look at our cows. But, you know, life doesn't work that way, and unless you own that golf course, you don't have a right to the view of the golf course. You really don't. You, so, I, I'm just a big property rights owner, I guess, and I do think there is health and safety in requiring a strip to be maintained, it's a fire break, and also, I agree with the vermin and rodents, but I just find it, for me personally, very un-American to require a company to spend a lot of money when the residents around it didn't want to be a part of it, but they want the benefits from it. I just, I really have, have a problem with it. When I look at the other golf courses in the county, and frankly, this is a national trend, and you see it here in the county with, with, let's see, Timber Oaks, okay? The residents bought the property with an MSBU. Magnolia Valley, they bought the property with an MSBU. In Gulf Harbors, we will be buying the property with an MSBU. If, I feel that if the folks in Beacon Woods, and it's a beautiful community, if they want to have a park behind their homes, go for it, buy it, but don't force someone who tried to work deals with the community to, to stay in business when they weren't willing to help support him, so I, I'm very much against this. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Mariano?
Yes, thank you. You know, this, this started with the Lynx Golf Course, and I'll tell you, that piece of property there, it was designed for nothing but a golf course, there's not enough room for green space. Part of the drainage in that whole area is all from these narrow ferros that dip down and are used as fairways, but in a heavy rain, they'll take, take the stormwater. The property value premium that they paid to live in that golf course was huge. They did, the residents were, you know, given an opportunity to help him pay for his capital costs with no guarantees about anything else, a condition. I will say, I actually tried to work, you know, similar to what Commissioner Moore had done with Plantation Palms to try to give him something that would be patable. It was such a quick thing and a quick decision for him to just shut the thing down, and partly because he owns another golf course right down the street, in my opinion. So, if he has one, he figures they'll get all the business from that, he's not worried about what's over there. So, with the, the strength, the strength of what he had done in not working with the residents to try to make it happen, because they did want to have a golf course property, they bought golf course property, that I am sympathetic.
No, no, they bought property that looks at a golf course.
They have, they had the rights, I mean, this is intertwined in the deed restrictions, that whole thing, the rights, they have rights of way going all the way through the whole golf course to get there to the clubhouse, which a lot of them, for the lifestyle, they went to the restaurant, went to the pool, without going on the streets, they, they went through the golf course to get there. So, even by not maintaining that, the growth that's in there, if you get coyotes, snakes, whatever, it just improves all that growth that makes it dangerous for those people, and, and part of their rights away of the quality of life that they had. So, with that, I am, I know it's worked very well in Seminole County, didn't cost that much burden. If you set a good plan together, it's not that expensive to maintain, but if anybody wants to drive out and take a look at it, the way it looks right now is really detrimental to the area. It hurts property values in that whole area, and driving down property values actually burdens their quality of life in the tax base of this whole county by letting that go. So, I think it's a very viable golf course, it could come back, but I'm very supportive, and I thank the county attorney's office for, for doing such a good job. I didn't have all sorts of people, I think you've seen the input over the past month, with different people from the board, people that live there, they support this ordinance, and they're very appreciative to have it done, and they, they want to see it done. So, they've been patiently waiting to see this come together for today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I see Commissioner Oakley, your hand's up, sir.
Yes, sir. I never thought about this affecting DOT and right of ways around our highways. Is this going to affect them, that's going to cause an issue between us and FDOT on mowing?
They are excluded from the definition of improved property, as you are. It says excluded from this definition are public rights away, publicly owned stormwater facilities, publicly owned landfills, all publicly owned parks, and natural land areas designated as passive recreational purposes. That's under the definition of improved property.
Oh, but it's not in the ordinance, but it's somewhere else?
No, it's in the definition of improved property in the ordinance.
Okay, thank you for that answer. That, Ron Oakley moves approval.
Second?
What, what motion? I didn't get to Commissioner Wells yet, but.
Oh, well, excuse me.
I know it's hard to see.
Got a motion in a second, go ahead and listen to him, too.
No, I'm fine, I think we spent enough time on this, back and forth, we've heard the residents come to our meetings, you know, but something needs to be done out there, and even if he does, makes it into a pine tree thing, you know, he still needs to maintain the drainage, that's my biggest thing when it comes to the residents, is the flooding and stuff that'll happen if they don't maintain it.
Okay, so, I have a question then, thank you, Commissioner Wells. You know, I'll just be honest, I'm a little bit on the fence on this one, personally. I see Commissioner Starkey's points, I see Commissioner Wells, and Mariano, and Oakley's points, too. So, you know, Commissioner Mariano spoke a little bit a second ago about it being a golf course community, and that's what they expected. Well, I don't disagree, yeah, if you guys remember, it was long ago, there was a vote out at Quail Hollow, and I lost 4-1. So, I'm thinking back, where were the, you know, what's the difference in that situation about, you know, the rights of them having the rights to have a golf course community? We talk about Plantation Palms a little bit, and yes, Commissioner Mariano, I'm glad that there was, maybe somebody could fill me in, either Commissioner Mariano or somebody with staff could fill me in, because from my understanding, the owner did attempt to work with the residents there, similar to what they did to pay a monthly, quote, "membership fee" to keep it going, and I heard they declined. Now, again, I'm not saying that's correct or not, but if somebody can jump in and tell me what really happened, I'd love to hear it, because I heard the offer was made.
Mr. Chairman? Jack Mariano?
Go ahead, Commissioner Mariano.
So, and I, and I, I tell you, Commissioner Moore, I listened to what you said at that meeting, when we first started talking about this, about what Plantation Palms had done. I reached out to the association, I brought the deal that was offered there, because it was a better thing for the residents with their, the whole situation. The deal that was offered to the people at the Lynx was not anywhere near as, as quality, wasn't, didn't do any of the protections in there whatsoever, it was just really a strong-handed thing of what he wanted to have done, and the people looked at it, they rejected it, and, you know, frankly, if you, if you want to go back to like Timber Oaks and look at that, the way that people were treated, they just, you know, lots of confidence in the person and to make the deal happen. But they, they did have an offer, they didn't like the offer, they tried to work with him, there was no counteroffer, and then when the numbers came in finally, like when he firstly was selling the golf carts, the numbers that came back in were like so astronomical that it even blew those numbers previously out of where reality was. So, the people did try.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, Commissioner Starkey.
When I met with, and I, I just want to say, for the record, I have never met and never spoke to the person who owns this, I have no idea who he is. But when I went out there and drove around with the gentleman, very nice gentleman, in his golf cart, he told me part of their challenge was that the people on the golf course may have wanted to pay for the golf course, because it definitely affects their property values, but there are a lot of people who aren't on the golf course that didn't want to help pay for it. So, you know, what's going to happen to this property? Because certainly, someone isn't going to keep spending money on a property that is just bleeding him dry, so, yes, either he's going to sell it, or if it's in an LLC, I would guess he's going to go bankrupt and just close that LLC, and then, and then they're going to have nothing, but, Mr. Steinsider, can this property be developed, or would he have to come through like the other ones have? What, is there a zoning underneath this, or?
Well, there would be, every property has zoning underneath it. I don't know what the, this particular zoning is. As I said, this ordinance is not designed, while it will fix this problem, it is a, it is a public health, safety, and welfare that should be looked at more broadly than just the Lynx.
So, so what the, so what is the outcome of this going to be? It's going to be either sold for development, or he's gonna close his LLC, they'll, and a piece of property will rack up liens against it, and no one will pay it, and the county will be on the hook. I think if the residents want a golf course, they should buy it, or if they want a park, they should buy it. You're just not entitled to the view of property you don't own, I'm sorry, that's, this is Commissioner Wells. What, what is that saying in real estate? Buyer beware, what is that in Latin?
Caveat empor.
Caveat empor, so, I, I, I see I'm on the losing vote of this, but I think, I think this is going to hasten some kind of action on that golf course that the residents don't want.
Yes, Commissioner Wells, I'm sorry.
Maybe ultimately it comes down to an MSBU, and we have to look at this, but the bottom line is, you've been out there, and I've got my friend's house, it's right there, the gentleman has an obligation, and when it stops up three, four feet, it's like Magnolia Valley, I know that, obviously, we're maintaining that, we maintain the buffer larger than what is expected by county ordinance, because of, as, as Jeff brought up, health and safety, you know, we don't want coyotes and other varmints and anything else in people's houses, that's really, to me, it's a public health, health and safety issue.
Before I go to Commissioner Oakley, staff, is there any way, so, last meeting, it was a tie, it was tighter on the board members in Newport Ritchie, and I can barely see him from my camera. That's why I didn't know if it was Commissioner Wells or Mariano that.
No, you can't, he said the other way.
Okay, it was different last time. Okay, Commissioner Oakley?
Yeah, I hope the people that live on this golf course do not think that because we're approving this, if we approve this ordinance, that I hope they don't think that the county's going to take over and mow, because we have no funds set aside to mow properties of private owners, so, I have an idea that some of those folks think that is, since we have the ordinance, and we'll go out and mow, but I don't think that's the purpose of this ordinance.
Thank you, Commissioner Oakley. That was a question I was going to ask Mr. Steinsider, again, in, in going back, I think it was Commissioner Starkey kind of mentioned it, so, going forward, and think about this ordinance in the broader perspective, what, how much is a county going to be on the hook overall? So, are we, what are we, what are we obligating ourselves to possibly, cost-wise, to mow these properties across the county, not just this property, but multiple properties throughout the county? So, I do have a question that, I'd love for Mr. Biles to jump in and say, where's this money come from, where's the accounts, because if you do it for one, do we have to do it for all? Mr. Biles?
Mr. Chair, well, if I can answer the legal question first, the ordinance in Section 9, which is an existing section of your ordinance, says the authority to correct dangerous conditions provided by this section does not impose any affirmative duty on the county to warn of or correct the conditions, such conditions, and so, it's optional? Now, when enough people complain, that may not be optional anymore, but legally, it's, your ordinance does not require you to go out and mow. It is an option in, in your toolkit if all else fails, but if you do, then a lien is imposed on the property, on the residential property. We have not been very successful in, in getting, in collecting those liens, but I, I don't know whether Mr. Biles has a pot of money that's designated for this, other than, than what code enforcement has today.
Yeah, I think one mow at a golf course would wipe out the budget that code has for mowing residential yards, so, we have a contractor set up that does that on, when we have the complaints in a neighborhood, but mowing a golf course is order of magnitude larger than a single-family yard, and so, there is not money in code's budget to mow, and so, we would not be able to mow a golf course if an owner was not going to come into compliance. We do not have the money to do it in code's budget.
Has, has anyone talked to this owner of what his plans would be if he was required to, to keep up the maintenance of the golf course when it's a folded golf course?
I have not.
I think you're hastening something you don't want, but I would try and make it more affordable for him, and just do the strip, and maybe it'll stay like that longer, but.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Mariano, can I just follow up? Because I had asked a question, could I just follow up? I just, I ever got to do my follow-up. Thanks. Um, so, I guess the question is for the board, actually, is, I'm going to make sure this ordinance isn't, we're not moving this ordinance forward just because of one property, and that we're not going to have, that, we're not going to have somebody in the next few meetings say, hey, staff, I direct you to mow this property. Because if that's what it's for, I can't be supportive. If, if we're out of it, I just want to make sure we're not going to go, again, every commissioner and every district's going to start pointing the staff to go mow empty properties, because we don't have the funds for it. I mean, we got to all be agreement of that. I don't want to hear somebody say, go mow the golf course to staff next week. Because if we do it there, we got to do it everywhere. I understand the ordinance is the protection side, but we don't have a, an empty pot of money, we don't have a fund set up to do that. So, if you do one, you're going to get a call from every person across this county asking to mow this vacant property, because you did there. I know that will happen. So, if I could hear confidence, if I could feel confident, my fellow board members, you're not going to direct staff to go mow all these properties, okay, if it's on the property, that's one thing, but don't, you can't just have to go out and mow these.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Mariano?
Thank you. Um, you know, when, when you own two golf courses right beside each other, to mow one to another one is not that big a situation. He did make it a little bit difficult by going to pine, all the, plant all the pine trees that he's got out there, which I don't think he's got the right to do it in the stormwater ponds anyway, but that'll get looked at. Um, I'm happy to go talk to the residents and let them know that, look, though we passed this ordinance, it is mandatory, he's got to take care of it, we're not going to be mowing it. So, if it does come to that, it may take everybody chipping in together to kind of make that happen. So, I'm happy to relay that it was not in our intention at any time to go mow this property.
Thank you, sir. I just want to, because I, I'm afraid it'll just, you know, turn into a, a domino effect across the county, and, again, we don't have the budget for it.
No, good point.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Commissioner Starky?
I would just say, um, there, you know, there are residents who have suffered through the Gulf Harbors debacle for years, and, um, they go out and they mow the strip themselves. And, um, I don't know if, uh, what this owner, if he lets them go out and mow behind their house, and, and, you know, maybe there's, he might consider giving them permission to go mow. But, um, I'm looking forward to that being over in Gulf Harbors, I can tell you that. What, you know, while we've been stuck with COVID, so many people out walking their dogs, and it would have been nice to have that as a part.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir, Commissioner Mariano?
So, Commissioner Starky, good point. He, they, the people out there, some people we probably know, were actually out there mowing it, and they told them not to go mow it. So, they actually took them off the golf course. So, those that wanted to do it, couldn't even do that.
Well, we'll see what happens. I, I, you know, again, I'm, I'm against this. I, I think it should be a strip only.
Mr. Chairman?
Was it Commissioner Oakley that made the initial motion to apologize?
Yeah, I think I'd like to withdraw my motion because of the fact that what, it opens a can of worms, you might say, that, that makes people think that the county's going to take responsibility and mow these properties, and I'm concerned about that. Uh, I think that's something we need to look at a little bit better, that, you know, I'm, I'm just afraid, we're just going to open this thing up, and then next week, every call we're going to get is, we should be mowing, uh, private properties around. We can't afford to do that, and I understand that. So, I withdraw my motion of approval.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Commissioner Mariano.
Let's continue this 30 days, give the county attorney to draw something in, in there where it does protect us, and we can see very clearly that we're not going to. Um, and that'll give the chance, uh, to get it to take that issue away. I think we've dealt with the developer issue, the agricultural issue, so I think it's a, it's a tweak that can get done.
Okay, I have a new motion, I withdrew, Commissioner Oakley withdrew his motion, I have a new motion on the floor to continue this 30 days by Commissioner Mariano. Do I have a second for that motion?
Mr. Second?
I have a second by Commissioner Wells.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, rather than saying 30 days, let me get you to a board meeting.
6:16 or 6:30?
6:00. Date certain.
It would be 6:30.
6:30 is, I'm showing that as date city, is that right?
Yeah. It's going to be virtual.
Okay.
All the way through June.
If we could continue it to the 6:30, 6:30 meeting, uh, 1:30 or soon thereafter, as they may be heard.
Okay. Commissioner Mariano, is that okay with you?
That's good. 6:30 is a good date.
I had a second, I had a motion by Commissioner Mariano, Mariano to continue this to a date certain on June 30th, and I have a second by Commissioner Wells. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Three, Commissioner Starky.
Well, I'm going to vote nay, because I just think, well, okay, I'll vote nay. Aye. Board unity.
District Four, Commissioner Wells.
Aye.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District Two, Chairman Moore.
Aye, motion passes 5-0 to continue this to the June 30th, 2020. Thank you so much. Moving on, um, P5, we approve?
Yes, sir. Um, P5 was published in the Tampa Bay Times, January 10th, 2020, and May 10th, 2020.
Thank you.
Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development, item P5 is PDD 200497. It's an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, future land use map 2-15, and sheet 17, changing from IH Industrial Heavy to ROS, major recreation open space on 13.65 acres, more or less a real property located immediately north of Anclot River Park on the west side of Bailey's Bluff Road, approximately 1,170 feet north of Hickory Lane, providing for repealer severability and an effective date. On this item, we ask that you adopt the proposed large-scale comp plan amendment by roll call vote, and that you, um, accept that attachment one maps be part of the ordinance that is transmitted to the state. This has been, uh, provided to the clerk's office as well.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Any questions from the board? Or actually, take public comment, I apologize. I think, well, I'll do, I'll do questions first, and I'll take public comment.
What is that?
Any questions?
Inside?
Is that an ambulance?
It's gone off twice.
So, no questions, no questions from the board? Do we have anybody sitting up for public comment, or on the line to speak? Call them.
No, sorry. Wait, was this the one on the park?
It's P5.
P5 and P6 are both part of the Duke.
Yeah, yeah, this is a great project. This is, uh, uh, this is the, uh, the county's purchasing the property from Duke, the Anclot River Park, and, um, we have to put it all recreational. So, um, I strongly recommend we all vote yes. I make the motion to approve this ordinance.
Ron Oakley, second.
Again, is there anybody on the line for public comment, or is there?
No, sir.
Okay. Motion on the floor by Commissioner Starky?
Ron Oakley, second.
By Commissioner Oakley. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Three, Commissioner Starky.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Wells.
Aye.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District Two, Chairman Moore.
Aye, motion passes 5-0, thank you. P6, please. We approve.
Yes, P6 was published in the Tampa Bay Times, January 10th, 2020, and May 10th, 2020.
Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development, PDD 200498. This is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, pro, providing for large-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use maps, map 2-15, and sheet 17, cha, changing from RES six, residential six quality units per gross acre, to PSP, public semi-public, on approximately 75 acres of real property located east of Bailey's Bluff Road and north of De Duke Energy Substation, providing for repealer severability and effective date. We're asking you the, to, to adopt the proposed comp plan amendment by roll call vote, and to accept that map, map attachment one be made part of the ordinance, which is transmitted to the state that has been provided to the clerk's office.
Any questions? Any questions?
Uh, this, Commissioner Starky, I, um, make a motion to approve this ordinance. Again, this is part of the parks deal with Duke. And if you look at the map, um, this, this land has been used by, um, people to illegally recreate. They even set up tents and hold motocross races and all kinds of stuff out there. So, the sooner we can, um, get all this in a good use, uh, the better off we'll be. So, I recommend approval.
I still have to ask, okay, guys, give me, I still have to ask for public comment, if there's anybody on the line.
No, sir, there is.
Is there anybody on the line?
I thought he did.
There's not? Okay, no public comment. So, I, going back, I have a, a motion by Commissioner Starky. I think I can, Commissioner Oakley, second?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Three, Commissioner Starky.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Wells.
Aye.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District Two, Chairman Moore.
Aye, motion passes 5-0, thank you. We're going to move on to the, uh, proceed with the procedures for rezonings. Mr. County Attorney, please read the view of the procedures for rezonings.
Be happy to, Mr. Chairman. There are two rezoning agendas, regular and consent. Staff will present each application to the board accounting commissioners. If staff or planning commission has recommended approval, and there is no opposition, the op, application will be considered by the board without further presentation. If staff or planning commission has recommended denial, or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation. The opposition will be given three minutes for each individual, or five minutes for a group representative, and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or planning commission recommendation, or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning, may at this time request the petition be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address, and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi-judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is that mere public support, or opposition of an application is insufficient for this board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria found within the board's land development code.
Thank you, Mr. Steinser. Um, Madam Clerk, we have proof for P7?
Yes, P7 was published in the Tampa Bay Times, March 13th, 2020, and March 20, 2020.
No, I said this is P7, continuance, Ms. Hernandez?
Yeah, FAC 200496. This is actually a continuance to June 16, 2020, virtual BCC meeting at 1:30 PM.
I entertain that motion.
Um, I'll make that motion, Commissioner Starky.
Have a second?
Second, Commissioner Wells.
A motion by Commissioner Starky, a second by Commissioner Wells. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District One, Commissioner Oakley. District One, Commissioner Oakley.
He's not in his seat right now.
Okay, thank you. District Three, Commissioner Starky.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Wells.
Aye.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District Two, Chairman Moore.
Aye, motion passes four to zero. Move on to P8, P8. Madam Clerk, do we have, uh, proof, please?
Yes. Item P8 was published in the Tampa Bay Times, February 14th, 2020.
Ms. Hernandez?
Denise, Denise Hernandez, PDD 200518. This item was advertised as a continuance. It's continued to the June 16th, 2020, BCC meeting at 1:30 in, um, virtual, virtual meeting, sorry.
Excellent, thank you.
Move to continue.
I entertain that motion. I have a motion by Commissioner Mariano? Sorry, I couldn't hear the second.
We need a second.
Second from Commissioner Wells.
I have a motion by Commissioner Mariano, a second by Commissioner Wells. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Three, Commissioner Starky.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Wells.
Aye.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District Two, Chairman Moore.
Aye, motion passes 5-0, thank you so much. Moving on to E9, another continuance, it looks like. Madam Clerk, do we have?
Yes, um, P9 was published in the Tampa Bay Times, April 19th, 2020.
All right.
Denise, Denise Hernandez, PDD 20CU 23, indeed. This is a continuance to June 30th, BCC meeting at 1:30 in, um, virtual. This actual, actual item has to go to the Pasadena Health Planning and Policy Committee first, and it's scheduled for March 20, May 27th, I apologize.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. You have a motion?
Move to approve, uh, the continuance. Commissioner Starky?
I have a motion to continue by Commissioner Starky, you have a second?
Second, Ron Oakley.
Thank you. Second by Commissioner Oakley. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Three, Commissioner Starky.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Wells.
Aye.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District Two, Chairman Moore.
Aye, motion passes 5-0, thank you. And now, we're going to move on to, we have nine public hearing items on the consent agenda. If I'm not correct, these items will be approved, approved by one vote without a presentation, unless there is someone here in objection. Um, those that are pre-registered to speak to any of the items on the public hearing agenda, prior to speaking, you will be sworn in by the clerk, um, all clerk, um, on the list provided. Properly swear in each person individually, well, I guess we can individually swear in per agenda item. That's what we're, I guess, going for. So, um, start with P9.
We do not have anyone signed up for P9.
P9, if there's anybody that is here to speak on it, you'll need a clarimane, please.
No, sir, we do not have anyone, uh, signed up to speak to, to this item. Item P9 was published in Tampa Bay Times on April 19th, 2020.
Thank you, ma'am.
P10?
P.
Oh, I thought you said P9.
Did I say P9?
Okay.
That was P9.
All right, so I'm sorry, item P10 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on April 19th, 2020.
Yes, P10, thank you.
Item P10, did, did you want to swear folks in?
Anybody speak on the item P10?
The gentleman who was signed up to speak hung up, so he's not on the line, or did he get back on the line? Oh, he just got back.
Mr. Chairman, get, given that these are, that these are consent items, and these are applicants that have been signed up, that are signed up for, to speak for their items, I, I would say we go through, unless they, unless they're going to pull their, off their own item, um, I don't need, I don't know that they need to be sworn in unless they speak.
Okay, so we won't, unless somebody wants to speak, we won't do any swearing ins today.
That's correct. Given the circumstances we're in, I think that, that makes the most sense.
All right, great. Well, we'll go to P10 then.
Okay. P10 is PDD 207474, in the name of JDR Investments, change in zoning from C2 General Commercial District to I1. Uh, the applicant on this item has also agreed to, voluntarily agreed to record a deed restriction that prohibits auto towing and connected storage of vehicles. This item comes to you with a recommendation of approval from both the Planning Commission and the Planning and Development Department.
Anybody here on the, on the line, I should say, to speak in objection to P10? No? And Paul, you didn't have to answer that. Oh, is there anybody on the line to speak in objection to item P10?
No, sir, the only person that we have online is the applicant.
Okay, so nobody's here to speak in objection, so leave on consent. P11?
Item P11 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on April 19th, 2020.
Item P11 is PDD 207479, in the name of Helen Gleason Revocable Trust, WCB Town Homes Phase Two. It's for a change in zoning from AC Agricultural District to MF1, multiple family medium, medium density district for attached townhome units. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission.
Anybody on the line to speak in objection to P11?
No, sir, no one is, uh, signed up to speak.
Thank you. Uh, no, no objection, leave on consent. P12, Madam Clerk?
Item P12 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on April 19th, 2020.
Thank you. Ms. Hernandez?
PDD 20CU 24, Thornwood Associates LLC, Chapel Crossings, for the sale of alcoholic beverages, beer, wine, and liquor, on-premises consumption, and package sales, in conjunction with the operation of a commercial center in a master plan unit development district, comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission.
Anybody here on the, or on the line to speak in objection to P12?
No, sir, just the applicant.
Yeah. Leave on consent, P13?
Item P13 was published in the Tampa Bay Times, April 19th, 2020.
PDD 20CU 25, in the name of Holte Home Company LLC, Bexley PUD Amendment, Amendment Center, for the sale of alcoholic beverages, beer, and wine, on-premises consumption, and package sales, in conjunction with the operation of an amended, in a development district, comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions from Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission.
Anybody on the line to speak in objection to this item?
Hang on, we have an IT issue.
You're good.
Oh.
Oh, anybody on the line to speak in objection?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Okay, leave on consent. P fourteen.
P fourteen was published in the Tampa Bay Times, April twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty.
PDD twenty zero four eight eight, this is a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, CPAL twenty oh three, Connerton three and four, and this is the transmittal phase, transmittal proposed large-scale comprehensive plan, text amendment of goal, future land use five, Connerton Newtown, and the future land use element, section future land use eight dash six definitions of the future land use classifications, and a map amendment to the Highway Vision Plan Map seven dash thirty-six. Today, we're asking that you authorize transmittal to the Department of Economic Opportunity and other reviewing agencies.
Anybody on the line to speak in objection to this item?
No, sir.
Okay, leave on consent. P fifteen.
Item P fifteen was published in the Tampa Bay Times on April twenty second, two thousand and twenty.
Denise Hernandez, P fifteen is UT twenty dash zero four, zero two four zero, resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, designating that area commonly known as Lakeside Phases Four and Six as street service area, and consolidating Lakeside Phases Four and Six and the existing Lakeside, Lakeside Phases Three, One B, and Two B into the Lakeside, Lakeside Phases One B, Two B, Three, Four, and Six as a streetlight service area for the streetlight improvements, and to levy assessments against the property benefited by the streetlight improvements in accordance with the Code of Ordinances, Chapter ninety four, Article three, Sections ninety four through four, dash forty-six through ninety four dash fifty-six. And today, we ask that you adopt the resolution by roll call vote.
Discussion?
Anybody on the line to speak in objection, Paul?
No, sir.
Discussion?
Yeah, discussion by, well, we need to pull it in, right? Pull P fifteen?
If it's a brief question, you may, may just want to handle it. I don't know how in-depth the commissioner's question is.
No, I, I'm just wondering if we shouldn't lump this in with the alcohol sales, that when have we ever denied a street lighting? So unless there's objection, then you bring it to the county commission, otherwise?
You cannot set up a street lighting district by administrative action, you're levying special assessments on these people.
Aye.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Leave on consent. P sixteen.
Item P sixteen was published in the Tampa Bay Times, April twenty second, two thousand and twenty.
Denise Hernandez, UT twenty zero two nine three, resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, designating that area commonly referred to as River Chase Unit Two, Track one hundred replat, as a streetlight service area for street lighting improvements, and to levy assessments against the property benefited by the streetlight improvements in accordance with the Pasco County Code of Ordinances, Chapter ninety four, Article three, Sections ninety four through dash forty-six through ninety four dash fifty-six. Ask that the board adopt the resolution by roll call vote.
Anybody on the line to speak in objection to this item?
No, sir.
All right, please leave on consent.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Go ahead.
No, sir, you're good.
P seventeen, do we have proof?
Yes, item P seventeen was published in the Tampa Bay Times on April twenty second, two thousand and twenty.
Denise Hernandez, UT twenty dash zero two nine four, resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, authorizing streetlight service within the areas commonly referred to as nature's hideaway, authorizing an assessment rate change, and establishing the levy of assessments against the property benefited by the street lighting in accordance with the Pasco County Code of Ordinances, Chapter ninety four, Article two, Sections ninety four dash forty-six through ninety four dash fifty-six. Ask that the board adopt the resolution by roll call vote.
So on consent, we have anybody on the, Commissioner Wells, I'm so happy to hear you're so excited about the last item that you're ready to jump right in and.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Anybody on the line for P seventeen?
No, sir.
Okay, leave on consent, please, P eighteen.
Item P eighteen was published in the Tampa Bay Times, April twenty second, two thousand and twenty.
UT twenty zero two nine five, resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, authorizing streetlight service within the areas commonly referred to as Turtle Lakes, authorizing an assessment rate change, and establishing the levy of assessments against the property benefited by the street lighting in accordance with the Pasco County Code of Ordinances, Chapter ninety four, Article two, Sections ninety four dash forty-six through ninety four dash fifty-six. Ask that the board adopt the resolution by roll call vote.
Thank you. Anybody on the line to speak to that item?
No, sir.
Leave on consent. P eleven.
P nineteen?
I'm sorry, when I say P eleven, I meant P, I apologize, P, that's it for the consent, to have a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda, Commissioner Starkey.
I have a motion by Commissioner Starkey to approve the consent agenda, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oakley. Madam Clerk, please call the.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Wells.
Aye.
District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District two, Chairman Moore.
Aye, motion passes.
I'm helping my webcam, Adam?
Somebody had their microphone on. I wonder who that was? Somebody, P nineteen.
Item P nineteen was published in the Tampa Bay Times on April twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty.
This is Marcy Esper, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. For some reason, I can't get my webcam, but, so going on to slide three, we are here today, Marcy Esper, Director of Community Development, and we're here to have both a public hearing and concurrently an approval of amendment to our five-year consolidated plan. The consolidated plan is the document that explains how we're going to spend our community development block grant, home investment partnership, as well as the emergency shelter grant, all from the housing and urban development. We have to do a substantial amendment, next slide, when we're doing, oh, I'm sorry, go back, slide, when we're doing an increase of funding that's over a million dollars now, so we're asking the board to do this amendment first for the CBG DR, the Alfred's buyout, for two point four million dollars. You've already seen this, and you've already approved this, this is just for the consolidated plan. We are also getting ready to receive CDVG COVID nineteen funds, and for one point seven million dollars, and you will see that contract separately, but again, this is for the amendment for the, for the consolidated plan. And lastly, a transfer of program income from NSP one to CDVG as part of a closeout. Again, you have seen this as a budget amendment previously, but we need to do this for the consolidated plan of one point three million dollars. Next slide. We also need to do amendments when we are changing or adding or subtracting activities, so, or doing an increase or decrease of activities. So we want to go forward with our consolidated plan and align with our subrecipient agreements, which allows the Assistant County Administrator to approve increases on contracts up to thirty percent. And final slide would be the addition of activities. Our current consolidated plan, which was written in two thousand and eighteen, was extremely specific and very prescriptive, not including some very broad categories, and we've all seen in the last couple of months how the needs of our community can change so quickly with a disaster, or a pandemic, or an urgent need. So we've created a couple of broader consolidated plan goals, which include economic development and affordable housing, so that we can flip on a dime to respond to the needs of our community. So again, we're asking this as a public hearing, to hear how the community feels about these changes, and then the board to approve it. Thank you.
Questions from anybody? Questions? Comments?
Great job by Marcy.
Okay, entertain a motion.
Move to approve, P nineteen.